Okay.
We're live?
Yep.
All right, it is 6:01. Good evening, this is Robert Stevenson. I'm looking to open the South Carolina Granville Regional School Committee Regular Meeting. I'll take a motion to open the meeting. Can I get a show of hands to open the meeting? Amy, let the record show the motion passes 400. Can I get a show of hands to open the meeting? We had more than that. Amy, let the record show the motion passes 400. We'll have another couple members joining us here in a couple minutes or just... All right, so, opening ceremony, can I get everybody to stand for the quick leave?
The United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, certain theories report we have the minutes from the meeting on February 14th. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes? Some seconds. Any questions on the minutes from the 14th? Fantastic. Can I get a shorthand to accept the minutes from the February 14th meeting? Amy, let the record show that the motion passes 500. Pam is returned. All right, correspondent Superintendent Willard.
I received a memo from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education regarding an act promoting student nutrition and regarding students unpaid meal debt. I have a copy for it for all of you to look at, but the highlights just are, we have to check our policy to make sure we're in line with this new act. But we have to make sure that if any student has an unpaid meal debt, that we cannot take any action that would publicly identify a student when payment has not been received for a school meal or for meals previously served to the student. You cannot serve a student with unpaid meal debt and alternate meal that is not also available to all students in the cafeteria. You cannot deny a student a meal as a form of behavioral discipline or punishment. You cannot dispose of an already served meal because of the student's lack of funds to pay for the meal or because they have unresolved meal debt. You cannot prohibit a student or a sibling of a student from attending or participating in non-fee-based extracurricular activities, field trips, or school events solely because of the student's unresolved meal debt. You cannot prohibit a student from receiving grades, official transcripts, report cards, from graduating or attending graduation events solely based on unresolved meal debt, or require a parent regarding to pay fees or costs in excess of the actual amount owed for meals previously served to the student. So we just received this yesterday. We are going to be looking at our school policy and make sure that it is in line with this new act, MGL Chapter 71, Section 72B, to make sure we are in line with it.
I have a feeling we might need to adjust it on the restricting graduation from unpaid meal debts, because I know I had an unpaid ticket that I needed to take care of before my eldest graduated a couple of years ago. But, yeah, this is, you know what, maybe it'll make it easy and the federal government will continue to reimburse it. Because this is a, I know I've had a couple conversations with Mr. President about the challenges with this type of program where most people find, but kids, if it, once the kids know this, it becomes extremely challenging to, I know I send my kids to school lunches, but that doesn't necessarily work out. They go and get school lunch. So.
The other part of this act that deals with compelling districts to participate in community eligibility provisions, try to take advantage of opportunities for increased funding, lower operating costs for school districts operating their school nutrition programs. I don't think we quite meet the threshold where we can do that, but there are other things afoot around universal free meals, so we'll see where it's.
You're not allowed to enforce anything that they need to pay. All right, thank you very much. We are at our first public comment. Anybody in the audience would like to make a public comment? Now's the time to do that. Jenny, do you want to say anything, guys? Great, all right, well, we will move forward. I believe that we are now at the most exciting part of our meeting. I would love to hear an update from our student advisory person concerning all of the changes that have happened since the beginning of the week. Take it away.
So, we've been on what felt like the shortest break ever, so I don't have a ton to report. But it was our first day back in two years without masks on on Monday, and students and teachers were happy to see different smiling faces. And the at-home test kits were successfully distributed the Friday before break. In sports, we have two state competitions today with skiing in Wachusett. We had three students go, Grace Rockbank, Christian Bach, Sean Crowley, and both Grace and Christian placed. And we have girls' basketball here at home against TBCA at 6:30, the first round of the tournament. And the spring sports registration deadline is March 9th, and official practices will be in the. And then with Coco for a Cause, all grades have the opportunity to donate to four different local organizations. And the Friday before break, we passed out a hot cup for the students, and money was raised for the South Carolina Shelter, Food Pantry Civic Fund, and the SRS, Students Against Destructive Services.
Yeah, we saw colored pictures of it before the meeting. They've been distributed and seen, so it looked like you guys had a great time. Awesome. Fantastic. That's it?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh, I thought you'd have a whole great big list of stuff. All right, educational presentation. Superintendent Willard.
I will start off, but I'm going to turn over most of the presentation to Director of Finance and Operations, Stephen Presnell shortly. We have been working, we have a short turnaround time. We have about a month to put together of next year's school budget, because we get the governor's cherry sheet at the end of January. We have to have a budget to bring forward to you at the beginning of March, so it doesn't really give us a lot of time. So it really starts in December, where we kind of look at where our needs are. So for this budget presentation, if you look at the foundation enrollment over time, I know a few years ago, we had somebody come in and do an assessment on what the attendance or enrollment was going to look like in our school district. And the fascinating thing is from FY13 to FY23, this 10 years, you've gone from 1791 students down to 1301. It's about 500 students we've lost through 10 years.
What, like, how many grades, what's your class size?
Of what, with all different grades?
Well, what, graduate, the graduate.
Class can be anywhere between about 100 to 120, but our kindergarten classes coming in are at 90. So our K1 and 2 are all 90, low 90s.
Yeah, it's, it's, like, over at the rec center, they have lost so many kids. Like, when I first came to town 10, 11 years ago, they had eight, 10 baseball teams at eight to 10 years old. We had 600 kids in baseball. We had 600 kids in soccer. The numbers are down by two-thirds.
Yeah, it's, it's crazy. Like, I look at even two years ago at FY21, which sounds like yesterday we were at 14, 15, and we've lost 114 kids in two years. And that is a significant drop in enrollment. So what I did is, I just, I know if a question comes up, is, you know, what's going on in my town? So I did the foundation enrollment by all three, by each town for the past three years. And over the last three years, it's been a net loss of 99 students in South Creek, eight students in Tallinn. But you remember that they only started with 43, so they're down to 35, and Granville has lost five students. They started at 166, and they're at 161 now. So it's, we are definitely seeing a decline in our foundation enrollment, which we know goes hand in hand with our Chapter 7 budget. So we did, the problem is, when we look at our foundation enrollment, we're not losing kids in groups of 20. So it's not like you could say, oh, I'm just going to cut a teacher here and a teacher here. We have 13 grades, so when you lose, you know, 100 kids, that's probably like, you know, six, seven kids a grade. It's not enough to cut a teacher. So we do kind of look at, and we do when we build our budget, we do look at enrollment. We do look at class sizes, and we do make shifts based on that enrollment as we build this year's budget. So Steve, I am going to turn it over to you, the budget portion.
So we met with the finance subcommittee yesterday, so they had a first peek at some of the numbers here. This is still a work in progress, so we're still fine tuning. Typically, the case right up to the last day before you guys are ready to doubt the budget. But so there's some fine tuning. The longer we go in the budget development cycle, the more clear the data is, the more clear the information is, so it's unfortunate that it has to be done with the regional school district by April 1st in order to get art born articles to the towns so that they can take action on, they can get it on their annual town meeting warrant and take action on it in May. Many other municipalities have much later in the year, they didn't see what the legislature does with the locally numbers. Sometimes can turn, turn in our favor. We rely on Governor Baker's budget that is released in towards the latter part of January every year. This year, he has included, the governor's budget proposal includes kind of a ramp up of the Student Opportunity Act. So increasing the foundation budgets for districts statewide to account for the things that the Student Opportunity Act was passed to do, deal with low-income students, low-income communities, English language learners, vocational schools, special education out of district costs, and employee benefit programs. Those things were all historically underfunded in, by the foundation budget. And for years, there had been clamor to, to modify the funding formula, the foundation budget formula, to account for those things. A few years ago, they passed the student, state passed the Student Opportunity Act, and they are now just getting implemented, delayed because of the COVID COVID pandemic, which kind of wreak havoc on projections for revenue at the state level, what they were dealing with. So a lot of things that got put on hold, but so now they're trying to make up for, for lost time. The, a couple, a couple of points I wanted to make before you kind of dive into the numbers, and I'm not going to get too deep into the weeds on this. I will share with the committee details, copies of the line-by-line item budgets. You can see that, see those, see what the changes are from the current year to what we're proposing for next year. Again, it'll still be in draft form, but you'll have an opportunity to get those and come back with any questions or concerns that you might, might have.
Just an additional cheat, right?
In addition to that, it was, yes, it'll be a 30-page document.
So the breakdown of all of this?
Yes.
Okay.
So just a couple of things, some comments to put the budget that we're working on into context. FY22's budget, so the current fiscal year's budget, actually reflected a decrease in appropriations by about $385,000 from the previous fiscal year. You're we're in right now is lower appropriations than it was the previous fiscal year. The increase that we're, that we have identified thus far of approximately $863,000, 3.34%, is almost identical to the increase from FY20, FY21, which was 853,346%. So it's, it's just interesting never seeing these $850,000 increases sandwiching in this $385,000 decrease here. This, something you have to bear in mind as we go through this process, and there may be questions from town officials. The assessments that the current year's budget is based upon, is Governor Baker's proposed state budget that was released in January of 2021, when finally approved by the legislature and signed by the governor in July of 2021. The required local contributions for all three of our towns increased over what we used in our budget. So there's ground to make up for that in addition to the increase that, that they're, that the state is looking at from the official numbers for this year to what they're suggesting for next. When we look at the assessments that were contained in the, in the locally adopted budget for FY22, so our FY22 budget, the required local contributions that DESI has put for, for next year are increasing by 636,000. It's a pretty significant swing that comes to changes to required local contribution from year to year. So that's a, that's a non-discretionary thing where you're required, the three towns are required to contribute that much money toward the regional school district operating budget. There are also non-discretionary assessments. We also have non-discretionary assessments that we pass on to the three towns, and, and those are increasing by nearly $107,000, largely due to an increase to the transportation assessment, because the regional transportation reimbursement identified in Governor Baker's budget is decreasing by about $50,000. And also an increase to the capital assessment, which is due primarily to a change in the makeup of our remaining debt service. Fewer vehicles that we're, are still in our debt service mix. And, and those vehicles are being offset by these charges to the, to the collaborative. Because there's less of that, there's less offsetting revenue against our debt service. So those two things contributing to $107,000 increase in, in non-discretionary costs. To further, is that exacerbates a problem? Yes, I have decreases in revenue, other forms of revenue by about $200,000. All those things taken together resulting in about a million dollars, million dollars in new assessments to our three-member towns. Most of it non-discretionary, required non-discretionary charges, $280,000 discretionary assessment. As you mentioned, there are still some things that we're working on coming to the public's next couple of weeks. Budget hearing with members in public in from the three towns, up their finances, select boards in two weeks. And we'll definitely have an opportunity to answer their questions at that time if they have. So on that budget summary page, if you, while I can touch on some of the items in there. Do you see the decreases in, on the top half of the form, the revenues, you can see the decreases to some of these revenue sources, regional transportation reimbursement, the SR2 grant, which never, never actually materialized. We included it. The grant materialized, but the ability to use it to offset local assessments evaporated. The final version of the FY22 state budget, so that goes away. We were actually never able to access that. Slight increase to Chapter 78 of 39,000. That's that $30 per capita increase that they provide to all districts for just as a offer against increased costs. Our charter school tuition reimbursement going down by 12,000, and our needs payments that we collect from the collaborative going down by 6,000. On the expenditure side, the most notable increases coming in general administration. We're in a contract negotiation year, so with the, with the teachers' union, obviously by far our largest bargaining unit. So we have to carry some dollars in our administration budget for that purpose. Employee benefits are largely because for FY22, we did receive a fee freeze to our health insurance rates. But in addition to that, we granted a premium holiday for one month. So we were allowed to not pay one month's worth of, of premium as a way for our insurer to, to provide relief based on the status of the plan. We need to make up that additional 12, so we had to carry 12 months in this, in the FY23 budget, carry 11 months in FY22. So a very modest increase with health insurance. It's 1.06% increase by carrying that 12 months and certainly additional cost. Also a 40, something $45,000 increase to pension assessment from Handicap Char. An area where we're seeing significant increases is in tuition to the vocational, our vocational schools, actually the out-of-district vocational schools, as well as the school choice program. We're going to talk about that in a little bit. Our technology lease. Bump that number by 50,000, anticipating full implementation or nearly full implementation of all of the components. The vast majority of our end-user devices are, are out and on lease. We still have a few, few labs and specialty things that we have not done yet. That would add about 50,000, we've got a bunch this year. At that point in time, we'll plateau, and you pretty much shouldn't be seeing just a constant number. Might see a slight, slight increase from year to year based on just the potential for increased costs of the end-user device. But for the most part, it should stay pretty flat. We've been ramping that up over the
So you're saying this is the last year we should see a large increase in that?
Yes.
And so it doesn't stay flat?
It, it, it should, just replacing device. We felt a change to the program, and we went to a, we decided we needed to go to a more expensive laptop. That way, that would add cost, we revamped the program in dramatic way, but assuming it continues in state that it's in right now, that number should be pretty, pretty positive.
It ramps up to that point now?
Yes.
And we push it ahead of schedule, correct? I mean, it was out of necessity, but I mean, you needed to do that.
It got accelerated as a result. And the individual school cost centers pretty, pretty much, you know, seeing small decreases. Again, we'll talk about that a little bit. And special education would be 4.16%. Some of that just positions in budget and some additional tuition costs. Below the line, we've, we're just identifying all the various grants that we, we get that are either recurring or in a multi-year status for, and also revolving account funds that we have access to. I should point out, further up on the revenue side, we are still relying on a significant contribution from our excess efficiency fund, 875,000. That's the same number that it is this year, if you recall from recent meeting talk, the one before, we talked about the fact that our E&amp;D is at the limit, it's actually the older limit, we have to return $16,000 to, to the member towns. So we're, we're in a good position to make solid contribution from E&amp;D toward reducing assessments to three towns. We are also, you can see now, it's almost second from bottom line, our school choice revolving account, we continue to rely heavily on those funds. It's still sitting in a very healthy state right now, and would be even after utilizing its 975.
So the vocational stuff is keep going up 25%.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I have to feel that there's a, there's a limit, is that how much that might grow? That's my personal opinion. I don't know if Jen has, has another thought on that, but we had gone for a period where it'd come down year after year after year, and then it started to begin to uptick this year. And it's continuing, it's going to continue for next year, but at some point, that has I mean, I think a lot of the economy issues are popping, they, a lot of pressure, kids want to, probably want to see down the line. It just gives them other options.
So the, the grant stuff down here, where we're seeing numbers in the left column, 2022, but no numbers in the right column, 2023. Does that mean that we are not, don't have those grants for?
So the stuff that shaded in blue, I just popped a number in there, we don't have those numbers, but they're going to be somewhere within that range. Oh, I'm sorry.
We didn't get, we didn't get the conversation for the three color.
I think what I shared with Amy did not have any numbers in there.
Yes.
So, so everything down to, say, SR2 would be an exact, pretty close to exact replication in FY23 versus FY22.
Okay.
The grants are typically off a, a little bit from year to year, but it, it doesn't vary.
Okay, so where there are no numbers doesn't mean that there's no money?
Correct. We just haven't populated that. Jenny and I are collaborating on it this week on whether we think those numbers will actually apply now.
And is this, does this money fit in anywhere up above for revenues, or is this additional?
It's addition. It's all in addition to the 26. Nearly $7 million.
And the expenses that are attributed to them do not show up above. That was my question as well. It's like, okay, do we have the expense above and the expense below? So anything that they're using, right, Steve? Anything that we're using that is allocated to be used with these funds down below are not included in the budget break.
Okay, so that might be where my second, my common question then lies, because I'm thinking like curriculum, and the monies that we spend towards purchasing our new curriculum, our, our, our new literacy, all of the, the stuff that like we talked about in ILT today, all the licenses that we have stuff for. Like, where, where does that money come from? Is that money coming, does that fall under expenditures in the individual schools? Does it fall under general administration, or is that primary grant money?
Most of it's in fall in general administration at top, at top lines, Jenny's area of the budget, although we have utilized some cases, some grants, particularly COVID-related stuff.
For the 504 position that we had.
Right.
Remember, we had, we allocated that under SR3, so that's good, that actually is going to come out of the SR3 part for that position this year.
Right, we have a few of these things that are funded by grants that we have to be careful, this funding cliff that goes away after FY24 staring at this. We're not smart enough.
We don't have a lot of expenditures in those SR2 or SR3 that are revolving.
Right here, there are, now, and I included it in this slideshow presentation for you, because that would be private ask. So I did put the fixed cost increases up here, and I broke them up into where one of them was. And then under the Easter funding positions, I put in the positions that we're funding under the Easter grant that are not. And then under the Easter funding positions, I put in the positions that we're funding under the Easter grant that are not included in the L E A budget. And also the capital projects that we, excuse me, submitted to the state for permission that we are not going to be asking taxpayers for its farm cap. Um, and I think those are really some really big, um. Points that we need to make is that we are using our Easter funds for a lot of these large, uh, having projects that we don't borrow against.
But now that's five or four coordinator position, that's gonna be one that gets transferred over to the general administration. After Easter three runs out, right? So we're, but we knew that going in.
Yes.
We're just taking advantage of these are three right now because it's sale.
And then what about stuff like paper and i Ready and things like that? Um, I know initially you could definitely use your S R three money for that because it's like a targeted intervention, but then when it runs out. So I don't know, like where does that come from?
Specific ones I struggle Jenny might know, better than, better than I. Lot of licensing, lot of those subscriptions, I think, for the operating budget. I think there are some things that we're, that we've invested in that we, when we did it, I think we were thinking these might be short-term things dealing with, uh. The conditions we had with the pandemic, more remote. Uh, learning taking place, hybrid learning, um, whether some of those things could stay or go away. I mean, they'll be evaluated as we, as we utilize them. And maybe decision about whether some, to the extent that some of them are still being paid by the grant funds. Which ones are worth keeping and the transition to a non-grant funded, so. Did I say that right, like close?
And and so just some other talking points, I can put in the highlights to the budget, just so if, if. You know, like what are the big impacts of this budget is that, uh, we do have Easter to the three grant funded positions that I listed that we. That are not being funded by the L A budget, that this is year two, a full implementation of one-to-one. And that we are again tuning to offset the budget of E and D funds in school choice. The negatives or the deltas are, um, there was a significant increase out of district vocational positions, the two, two hundred eighty seven thousand dollars.
Now, when you say out of district vocational, that is not C tech, not C tech, so it's declining in our assessment. So it's Smith boat, what else is it?
Westfield Tech and Westfield Tech, okay.
And those are only if there are programs that they are only offering there that are not being offered at C tech.
Correct. Now, is there, can we pinpoint why such a significant increase this year?
Uh, a lot of, um, students are going into the animal sciences and the agricultural, that's the common.
Mr. Trump.
Smithville, sorry, Smithville College, yeah, Smithville, yeah.
Did Mr. Trump also say the last thing was here, like plumbing, how is the other that are, that are at the other schools that C tech just doesn't offer?
We will, you know.
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah, in the subcommittee meetings, Jen mentioned that she was gonna look at it, they'll be back to see.
Yeah.
If there's some sort of common theme, of course, as we.
Well, because my, my thought is if other member districts to L P V C are also losing significant students to the same program. Then it's in L P V C's interest to add additional program.
I, I will say though, you know, just looking, I don't have the, the Westfield Tech. Programs that, that students are enrolled in, but Smith boat, or yes, Smith boat. Traditionally, we've had zero, one, or maybe an outlier year two students. We currently have. Eight, uh, eight students enrolled at X Center. And and anticipated that number will roll by at least two, two, four more students next year. The programs that students are enrolled in, there's a couple of plumbing, so that's. That's fairly common and you might expect that C tech, looking to program like that. The others, animal science, animal science, forestry and horticulture, agricultural mechanics, animal science and electrical. Those are rather unique to our, our district relative to the other collaborative communities. I'd be surprised if you have a, a, a strong.
Agricultural.
Command for that type of program.
Right.
It sort of backs it up, right, with the, the students, like, when you grand though.
Yeah.
Yes.
Cause we were looking at the loss of students, so I just went with math, like the, the number down in town. Was like an eighteen percent drop. For Grandville, it was only three, for Southwood, it was like eight point two something, I'm assuming. That there might be a large number of those in, in town, that did they go to Smith, uh, is there any break or they're not?
No, it's, it's probably.
Oh.
So that's what I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask if those decreases are simply population decreases or if they're decreases because they're being homeschooled or sent out of district.
There's, well, homeschool kids, they don't have there. So we do have a lot of kids who since COVID started.
And that's part of our enrollment to Connie or.
Yes, yes.
But the way that the state does the calculations, that decline from a financial perspective does not really impact us, correct? Because you run into the whole harmless.
What doesn't impact us on the chapter seventy?
Right. Right.
They, we have a somewhat, we need to, there's a lot of other districts in state.
No, 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 absolutely, yeah.
We're not going to see any upside in the Student Opportunity Act.
Right. Yeah.
But nor are we gonna see.
We're just seeing upside of the Student Opportunity Act, even if the whole harmless issue was there or not anyway.
Yeah, what, what it's gonna do is. It's gonna, because it's the local communities, the member towns are, are subject to their share of, so as the foundation budget grows.
Right. They're, they're making a local contribution, right.
Right, the, the chapter seventy eight won't grow, but the, uh, local communities, their share.
But they're gonna get stuck with that anyway.
They will.
There's like, there's no, there's no way around that.
Correct.
The bonuses, folks, if you wanna call it that, I mean, because of the whole harmless provision. With that, the declination in, in enrollment, it's not necessarily hurting us.
I'm like, it really is. Don't hurt us. Other thing to think about too is the C tech, you can only attend C tech, you start going there in the ninth and tenth grade. So I don't know if any eleventh and twelfth graders are starting to go to other vocational schools, maybe that has something to do with the.
You know, it's, it's pretty much the ninth, they're, they're, they're leaving at ninth grade, yeah. They're making that commitment, um, to, to a vocational.
Well, they, don't they have to? I mean, a lot of those programs are.
Yeah, definitely.
So my question is in the next box, the increase to school choice out of district.
Yeah, I, I actually added that to the fixed cost increases for the first time this year because we didn't, usually we're pretty flat on the school choice numbers. And so even though we're looking at it today, and what we're noticing is that people who are moving to Southwick to come to their home, front of their building, you won't. They're staying at their Agwam or Westfield where they currently reside. We also have a slight uptick in, uh, virtual, uh, schools. Uh, and our numbers of school choice decreased this year because we didn't allow as many kindergartners and first graders into school choice. As we normally do, so it's kind of like the balancing act between what we were taking in and what we were taking out, so it's kind of. So will we now paying out more?
No, we'll do, no, no, no.
Okay, but we have had an increase to what we're paying, yes, and I think it's significant, so.
It's still nearly a two hundred fifty thousand dollar swing.
Okay, yeah.
Just do it.
So if the, let's say family lives in Anwam, their kids are in public schools in Anwam, but they, you know, building a new house or they, they move into Southway. They wanna keep their kids in Anwam.
Right.
Is, is, is it our district that pays for them to go to school in Anwam?
Yes, but they're counted in our foundation enrollment.
Because we have the money to then give it.
To give it to them, so we're getting paid technically from the state, their money, but then we have to pay it.
We're just a pass through, it's as close to a voucher program that you can get that some of it will actually support.
Right, okay.
Right, cause we get the money and then we basically send it to Agwam in the form of a voucher to pay for the traction.
This is where I'm getting confused, because I seem to remember people coming to us. Um, like who are in our district, moving out, say, but I wanna keep my kids here in school, right? And don't we approve school choice seats for them?
Yes, so then.
Then we get money from Westfield.
So they go to Westfield, get the money from West, uh, Westfield keeps them in their foundation enrollment.
It's always been like three to one issue.
Yeah, we, we're looking at it, it's more of a two, one right now, it's, yeah, like three to one to two, but our enrollment's declining, right? So it's a discrepancy, is that?
It doesn't go.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll see average per kid, that one was like five thousand.
It still is, yeah, and there's, there's some increments for special education needs, so if there's some. Some significant needs that a student who's in the school choice program comes with, there's, there's money there.
Now, what about the next one?
Yeah, yeah, so that's the other thing I need everybody to know, so usually I bring forward a level service budget, I did not bring forward a level service budget. We did look at numbers and we, like I said earlier, we did look at class sizes and class enrollments. And we were able to cut four point five positions that are in our budget figure that will not be in our budget. So this budget that we're bringing forward does have four point five F T positions.
And how many positions make up the four point five?
Four and a half.
No, 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 you know what I mean, like, you know, eight, you know what I mean, like.
No, I do know what you mean, because that's what somebody was looking at doing.
Well, no, they work and they're like, it's not always four and a half, you can have eight people that make up the four and a half.
So, but this is four and a half, this is legit four and a half, you can't tell what the positions are.
Well, I can't say that from our discussions, I would say that. As usual, as I found with, with what they've done, they're really thoughtful.
Yeah.
Decisions and, uh. They're not necessarily bad situations in some cases of things that are going, you know, comes up that goes away that's. You know, just leave it at that, but it's, uh, I, I found from what the explanation was that it's, it's, it's pretty reasonable.
We try and, um, look at it through, uh, retirement, so that, it's what we all desire to, yeah. Um, as opposed.
I didn't wanna say that, you said it.
I did.
Okay.
But we can't always guarantee that, right, based on licensure, so, but that's what we're trying to do. So there are some positives, there are some highlights that are in the top one that, you know, what we're doing to help the budget. But then there's also the highlights for why the budget increased so much this year. But also to let you know that we did cut four and a half positions in spring this last year. Um, it would be much higher if we had not.
Steve, I have one question.
Sure.
On the, uh, on this, on this page here.
Okay.
The line item of this, uh, assessment, column assessment.
Yes.
How come Southwick and. Ramville goes down and Tom goes up?
You're talking about the school building project portion of the assessment?
Yeah.
Um, I don't have FY twenty two in front of me here, but I believe it's the re. The, uh. The recalc of the capital assessment. So every fifth year, we recalculate what the, uh. Proportional share is, uh, based on census data and by year average. Average enrollment and the reset, I believe, increase Tom's percentage of. The, um, capital assessment. So your, your, your percentage increased. Yeah, I know.
I'll trade you ten if you want.
Well, I mean, I, I gotta, I mean, the grand folks are gonna ask why did our percentage increase proportionally so much more? Right?
You dropped. I'm, I'm looking at the.
He's looking at this, he's looking at the green lines, the green line.
Green lines. Talking, yeah.
He's seeing the town.
Oh, I see, I see what you're.
The population. Raise.
I'll, I'll double check the numbers, but I, I believe it's because.
I would just like to know why, why it's.
Yeah.
Well, you said.
Cause you're gonna get hammered on it back home.
I could talk my way out of some of this.
We think it's because of a census of, uh, numbers that you get and then there's a recalculation and it just looks out. Their, their share of, of the.
The digital assessment.
Where they took a, a larger, larger.
That's gotta be based on population.
It's, it's a combination of population and, uh, student enrollment.
Right.
So what's the story with the charter school? Down by a lot, why? That's what.
They always evoke.
Yeah, we never have that, that number tends to swing quite a bit, and I don't really fully understand how. It's not, tends not to be a material number for us, I don't really understand exactly how Jesse's doing that calculation. And they seem like they're monkeying the formula every year, um, to get it to zero. What, what is the nearest charter school?
Yeah, P C P A was great. Not P C P A.
Pioneer Valley Charter, Charter Science, yeah. I'm sorry, this thing just turned on behind me, I don't know what just.
Yeah, charter, charter schools in the area.
There's the Pioneer Valley East and there's Pioneer Valley West, believe it or not, we do have some kids who go to the Chinese convergence, you know. And so I do know that, cause I, I thought that was an awful long ride.
But I think we've had, uh, Pioneer Valley, former nurse.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so I'm happy.
So how does that play into, let's just say, I'll take snow as an example. Southwood is really kind of bad, but let's just say South Valley's canceled. Your kids that are going through South Valley charter. But something in session, how does that work for? And to.
So charter schools were under no obligation for, for transportation, no transport.
And same thing with school choice.
And school choice, right.
School choice, I know, right, yeah.
Okay, so you know, school choice or charter, there's no transportation obligation on sending.
But you go to vocational school, out of district, like to Smith boat or to W T A, you provide transportation.
Oh, right, yeah.
Yes.
And it work in, yeah, the kids, they still pose, they don't. They don't.
Ah.
We don't have transportation.
As an excused absence.
So if, if where they're going to school gets canceled and we're open, they don't go to school? Because the school's not open.
Correct.
And if we cancel, but the school's open, they don't go. Maybe that's why they're not going. They're getting extra days off.
That would have been enough for me, Mr. Chairman.
They're getting, they're getting extra days off.
And then, um, just on our last page, we just put the capital improvement needs, again. There's really one sticking point, I do wanna mention it, um, so most of the capital, uh, improvement needs were being, are being met through our Easter funds right now. I know our kids just started painting the student parking lot. However, if they pave over a parking, um, if they heat the student parking lots. Don't know if people are gonna love that the kids are painting them. So I do wanna bring that up.
Who's that?
Taxpayers.
I, I wouldn't assume that.
Okay.
I would have, I mean, whether, if you.
I talked about that.
Look at it, yeah, we, look, from my perspective. If it's, if it's a new parking lot, old parking lot, if the, if the seniors wanna paint their parking spot and they pay twenty five bucks or thirty bucks or whatever. And at the end of the year, they get painted over, they're gonna do it renewably. I really don't care if it's a new parking lot or not a new parking.
Okay.
If it's an option that we voted for them to be able to do, why wouldn't we?
The discussion was, if it doesn't do damage, I don't, you know, as long as it doesn't do damage.
I mean, they're not poking holes in the pavement.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
I remember those Steve, not being active.
Yeah, I know, I know.
As a facilities guy, I turn those lights.
I know, but I mean, it's.
Perfectly lined, yes, all.
But they're not ripping the lines, they're painting in between the lines. It's, it's, we voted on this to be an, an option for the seniors to be able to do like other districts do. I personally do not see any reason that we would wanna change our, our minds. If we've gotta take a vote on it next year or at the end of this year, we will.
No, I just wanted to put it out there that I try to be as transparent as possible that. As long as people know that if this might come up on the town floor, um, at annual town meeting and that I can say. I spoke with the committee about it and I just wanna be able to speak to it, um, that I've spoken to you, we've addressed the issue at school committee and you are still comfortable with it. So.
If they wanna come to our meeting and voice their concerns, you certainly are welcome to do so. Great.
Now, the utility, what is the utility for?
Utility.
Is it, is it part of our, is it in Eric?
Yes, yes, we have a vehicle right now, uh, we had. We have a vehicle right now, uh, we had. Uh. We've put in a capital plan for uh, replacing the vehicle in an early iteration, a couple of years ago, um. And the committee at the time, maybe at the finance subcommittee level, um, kind of had some reservations about, about bringing that forward to the. To the three towns, uh, part of our capital program and we. Moved it from the capital plan, um, had to do some needed repairs on it, you know, spent a fair amount of money on the vehicle, had the repairs done. Looking at another round of pretty significant repairs, I think it's time to, you know, retire this vehicle.
Did we not ask for any capital last year?
We did, um.
Trying to remember what we put forward.
Wish, well, the, for the current year, I believe it's three hundred eighty five thousand, the year prior, I believe one, one thirty five. So very limited, yeah, so.
So this is two forty, right?
And Steve, if we add that. Except whatever we want to call for the, for the, for looking at the outdoor venues, would that, what, what's the limit, where does it, what, what level rises to capital?
Well.
Is there a, is there a dollar amount?
Depends a little bit on what, what it is, but I think our capital policy is ten thousand.
So that might be.
Yeah.
To have some sort of external person.
I need to get some clarification on whether that qualifies as a capital expense. In the event that nothing else happened, like typically if you did a feasibility study.
Right.
On something. You could then roll that feasibility cost into your, your permanent financing.
Oh, okay.
But if you do the feasibility study or some.
It doesn't decide to go.
Why, I, I just, I need to get some clarification on whether that can be made.
Okay.
Capital, um, financing side of.
So for folks that are new to the committee, um, capital, according to the regional agreement, capital. Works differently than operational, towards a budget approval in all three towns, so the budget goes to all three towns, all three counties. But their, the operational and the capital are approved separately and I believe, correct if I'm wrong. But I believe in order for the capital to go through all three towns, that needs to approve it, for the operational to go through.
True.
Yeah.
It's actually state. It's a statutory thing, yes.
Sure.
I mean, for original. But for, right, for. Or.
The best part is, is the, the operational comes through. The two towns are.
Yes.
Or they have.
Yeah. Great, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. President. Very well done.
We'll, we'll go through a pretty detailed explanation in.
Yeah.
So at our next, at our next meeting in two weeks, that's the budget presentation, correct?
Yes, and it's this, um, like a lot, scary, like I was gonna say that.
No, no, that's fine, so we don't really.
Slides from it.
So we're not really gonna have a, do we have a, a regular meeting?
No.
Okay, so, so the, the, the middle meeting of this month is the budget.
Yeah.
Our second meeting is really the one at the end.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we agree.
Right, right. Yep. All right, super.
Thank you.
All right, so policy, and I just, I've got to jump here in about five minutes, guys, so Pam, when I leave, you can. Take over if that's okay.
Right.
You get the gavel and everything. All right, so first one up, J I G C G tobacco use. Is the revised one, it's our second reading tonight, that's the one that we uh, adjusted to take out the uh, fines. So that we're not. Issuing them, the police department is, um, anybody got any questions on that? All right, the BB one organization is the updated uh, org, org chart for the district and the. Um, breakdown of who reports to who. Very minimal changes in there, but we do have it clarified now that the right school committee breakdown and, and all things done. You've got any questions on that one? Uh, all right, J I C A student dress code is our second reading, this is the slightly adjusted where we removed everything.
Yeah, yeah, this is the one where like I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure on this one, because if you notice right after that. You have what it used to be and you can see this big, long laundry list.
Yeah.
Of what the kids can't wear and my concern then was that that wasn't being enforced. So it was more important to me that we reduce it to the more important stuff and actually reinforce, enforce it. But then we ended up with this, which basically is nothing.
Well, I think the challenge is what Jen said last time, is that upon consultation legally. When you get even to the ones that you want to identify as the important ones.
Right.
Legally, you have an issue from the courts of any length. Which unless you've got egregious outliers, which this updated policy does allow you to do. If you've got somebody that comes to school in a completely egregious dress code. Administration.
One person thinks is egregious, it's different from another person thinks.
There's a lot, look, we have a ton of policies that are, what's controversial when it comes to, to curriculum? I mean, controversial, we've got a, we've got a, we've got a policy that deals with controversial subjects. What's controversial to you may not be controversial to others, there's lots of time for these policies have. Vagueness in it. I mean, I think this is why we hire principals to.
Well, that was my next question, if, because if we tease out policy versus procedure. Then should there be something procedurally in the student handbooks at the three different levels related to?
That is not a bad question. And, and.
Well, says no.
Okay, no, no, that's, but I mean, that allows us to use the policy.
He just said it's very hard to enforce it because a lot of these dress codes are very sexist. And um, it can open you up for um, potential litigation.
Yeah.
I know.
So this may be something Pam, that from a policy perspective, we may not really have any wiggle. We passed the policy and maybe we, we, maybe. The next time principal, we bring the principals and maybe we bring, maybe we bring Russ in. And Russ can have a conversation committee about what we can and what we can't do and maybe give us a better explanation, does that, does that ever happen, superintendent?
You could invite Russ in here.
Do you know what I mean, like may, that may not be a bad idea, because I certainly understand Pam's concern.
Well, you know, and I'm thinking about this in terms of, you know, training our students for professional life. You know, on the job and, and different jobs have different dress codes, right?
Yeah.
But on the job as a professional, you are expected to look a certain way. And when the kids are coming through school, school is their job, so for that very reason, we should be expecting them to meet certain standards. And I mean.
I, I get you, I think the only, the only alternative would be, and I don't think we're ever gonna get there, but I mean, look at, the private schools have a, have a very strict dress code.
I know.
Now, I think would be the only way that you could get around it is if you enforced a strict dress code as to what you need to wear, that avoids what you can't wear.
I, I hear you, I understand.
I just think they're asking some, some language, like.
Something.
Well, I mean, there's language, but it's.
You know, paragraph two. You know, really it doesn't say a whole lot, then you read paragraph three and it says reference paragraph two, really.
Right.
I don't know.
Student attire must not expose underwear.
Well, this all.
It's a whole, it's a whole issue.
Yeah, no, no, it's M A C, I mean, I think Patty, some, that's the, where it's, look, administration's authorized to take action in instances. Where individual dress code does not meet the state of requirements, but above it, it says. Uh, for health and safety and does not cause disorder or disruption.
But then, so, so then where do our hoodies fall that, you know, Pescatelli told us.
Yeah.
Impedes his ability to identify kids on camera, you know?
Right, but that could be something from a procedure perspective where they're like, look, we're not going to allow this because of X. Because it is destructive, it doesn't.
So do we need to put into a.
I don't think it needs to be in a policy. Because the policy's allowing them to make that decision. Right? That would be a procedure.
I think we should take it back.
I think we should take that policy too, yeah.
You think we should take it back?
Yeah.
I agree.
All right.
Maybe we can address some policy stuff.
Yeah, maybe that's a good idea, so we'll pull it. We can still leave it, I mean, what we do.
Yes, because still second reading, then you can bring it out for a third reading.
Yeah. Right, okay, once with the changes.
Wait, next, two weeks is policy sub, right? Maybe we can get Russ to that one?
Ooh, not two weeks, it'd be in four weeks, right, it'll be the last meeting.
Oh, no, I think they pause it some next week. Policy some.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
But I will see him tomorrow.
Okay.
For negotiations, so.
All right. We'll pull it.
All right.
We could, we'll.
Talk to him.
Cause the nice thing is Pam, that way we can have policy subcommittee meeting, get the adjustments and then present it next meeting at, at the third meeting of the month. All right. Um, okay, I am gonna excuse myself, these next bunch of policies were actually the ones that I wasn't there for Pam, that, that you guys went over last. Policy subcommittee, you've got them in your. So I'm gonna excuse myself and transition this over to you.
All right, so next up. We have.
We're gonna get, I'm gonna get rid of Gavin, if it gets out of hand, she can. Seems to have been known to yet. With policy.
Okay, so the next ones, these are all things that we went over at our last policy sub and they're basically things that Jenny had identified as. Um, outdated, um, or that should be replaced with um, mask. Um, policies, so this one, the next one is IA instructional goals, um, and that we just send it because it's irrelevant.
Right.
Next one is I H A M M one E, again rescind, um, because it does not belong in policy.
Good enough for me.
Works. Um, I H B E B bilingual instruction, rescind because it doesn't exist. Don't follow that. Uh, and I H B E A, English as a second language, this is our first reading because this is what we do call what once used to be bilingual instruction. So this is the first reading for this. Questions off this one? And then. We couldn't figure out what this one was, um, so this one, I H B E B. Um, it has steps four, but we didn't know what steps one, two, and three were, so again, this information is covered in the previous one, um, so simply rescinding this one. Um, all right, next up, I J instructional materials, it's first reading on this one. Straight, yeah, this is straight. And this is basically the role of school committee in curriculum, essentially, you know, our beliefs with regard to what curriculum should. Any questions on that one? All right, then we have, um, let's see here.
We didn't, we didn't get through all of these.
Um. Yeah, so this finished in our packet, that one was just. Placed by previous, no.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if we have to rescind this one or not, it's not listed in our, our rescind list, I J J. It's not listed here, so wait a minute, it should be. I J J will be rescinded once. I J is, is adopted, okay, so it's just, we don't have to rescind this without the other.
Well, it's not, it's shaded, that's.
Yeah.
It's not in blue.
All right, next up, we have, um, I J, or no, excuse me, I O J A, this is field trips, first reading. Yeah.
I am.
Well.
She said it first in the first term, oh, I J. Oh, it's on the agenda wrong, I forgot, sorry.
Here's her first mistake for every one year, one every five years.
And again, this is straight out of math. And the next one, I J O A H A, we're simply rescinding to replace the one we just. Next slide. And then, this is the new one. Um, I D C F A face coverings. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but all we're doing here is eliminating the requirement to wear masks at schools, so.
We had language in there to do that anyway? We had language through the buses to wear masks, about that was better.
Yeah, but I didn't know what it says.
Oh. I don't know if we've ever had a policy that we adopted and changed six times or better.
All right, so next up, we can go on to action. Correct, yes, move to approve the agreement between the Southwood, Tally, Bramble Regional School District and the Cafeteria Workers Association regarding wages for part-time. Part-time employees recommended.
So move.
Second.
Um, right, all in favor? Motion passes five, zero, zero. Move to approve the Southwood Regional School Program of Studies for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year recommended, so.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes five, zero, zero. Move to rescind policy IA instructional goals recommended, so.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes five, zero, zero. Move to rescind policy I H A N dash one dash E sample notice to parents guardians, recommended, so move.
Second.
All those in favor, motion passes five, zero, zero. Move to rescind policy I H B E bilingual instruction recommended.
Second.
All those in favor, motion passes five, zero, zero. Move to rescind policy I H B E B, English as a second language, redesignating L E P students recommended, so move.
Second.
All those in favor, motion passes five, zero, zero. Move to rescind policy I J O A dash one field trips recommended, so move.
Second.
All in favor, as the five, zero, zero. Move to wait for three readings for policy E B C F A face coverings recommended, so move.
Second.
All those in favor, motion passes five, zero. Move to accept the revised policy E B C F A face upgrades recommended, so move.
Second.
All those in favor, motion passes five, zero.
That sounds good.
All right, next up, we have our reports, superintendent report is next, so I just wanted to let everybody know that we do have a meeting set up tomorrow. Between Director of Finance and Operations, myself, Principal Carrier, and Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds to look at the progress that's being made. At Powder Mill School, um, and come up with a reopening plan, um, we. May be able to even open, uh, the, the two wings uh, next Monday, um, we'll see how things go. As soon as we have a definitive date, we're going to be working with the teachers' union to allocate some time for our teachers to come in. Fifth and sixth grade and the seventh grades who've been, um, disrupted during this move to come in and to move their materials back to their classrooms. Um, and we will uh, send a notice out to our parents as soon as we know anything, so that they can plan. Uh, the other thing I want to let you know is that, um, when the pipe burst, uh, Powder Mill did not have school that. So by law, all schools have to go to school a hundred and eighty days. So Powder Mill technically has another day of school that they have to make up, that the other days, the other schools do not have to make up. So we've been working with the union, we did send out a survey to the teachers, want to see if they, if they even be interested in coming in. On Good Friday as an option, because our only other option is to go on June twenty-first right now. Which would mean the rest of the school district would be getting up on Friday. Monday is Juneteenth, so Powder Mill would have to come back on Tuesday to make up the half day. So we're trying to work with our stakeholders, uh, collect some information, so we sent out a survey today. To our, uh, Powder Mill families to see if the parents prefer to come and send their kids, we're only doing it for a half day on Good Friday or June twenty-first. We know none of them, either it is a great option, but by law, we have to have the kids and we have to have the school open for a hundred days. So, um, we understand that, we understand either option is a good option, but by law, we have to have. Um, I also want to let you all know that, uh, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, Jenny Sullivan, is now Dr. Sullivan. Because she, uh, defended her dissertation the Thursday before school vacation.
The Friday before.
Friday before school vacation, so if anybody deserves a February vacation. Friday before school vacation, so if anybody deserves February vacation, it's Dr. Sullivan. So we are super proud of her, so congratulations Jenny.
Thank you.
Uh, and then the other thing is, I just want to give you a quick update on the conference I went to. Um, there were a few workshops that I went to that I just wanted to do a quick update on, one of them, I called Jenny, I was so excited. Um, it's on the science of reading and it's what our literacy initiative is this year. And it really goes to the systematic way and we teach children to read. And one of the things they kept saying is when you know better, you have to do better. And so we do know how to teach kids how to read better and we need to do better by them. And so we are on the right path in this reading, um, early literacy initiative. Uh, we really need to teach the kids phonemes and phoneme awareness in order to have them be fluent readers when they get older. Um, and that's one of the deficits that we're we're still seeing. So, um, when we're looking at our Dibbles reports, we were still noticing that we're still teaching because we're. Building the plane as we're flying it. Um, so our teachers are getting PD on the science of reading this year, so our early literacy results are not where we want them to be. But I feel like we're getting really good baseline data to measure this initiative over the next few years. To really see if we're incorporating and implementing that science of reading. Especially with our high quality instructional material, because the two of those together really should get about eighty-five percent of our kids reading at grade level. Uh. Together, and they shouldn't really need any other form of intervention, so. I said to Jenny, even if it's greater than a three-year initiative, it's so important, it's. Um, we just really need to work on getting those reading uh skills where they need to be. Another workshop I went to was on uh just equity work and creating a culture of belonging. I was at a meeting um with the Connecticut Valley Superintendent Roundtable on Monday. And funny enough, they're really changing a lot of this racial equity, diversity, and inclusion work to belonging. And I said, oh, no, we had that way before all of you and I held up our hashtag grants block. But really, it's creating a culture where all kids can succeed, where all kids have a curriculum and access to the curriculum. And they feel that their school belongs to them. And then another workshop I went to, and the last one I'll talk about, is leading after trauma. And the highlights were as a superintendent, um, you can't be the person out and about handing out life jackets to everybody. You also can't be out of a life raft pulling people in, but really needs to be that beacon, that lighthouse beacon. Of strength and keeping the district together through the trauma and always being the, you know, person that people can go to. But really, um, knowing what uh our strengths are and making sure that we're taking care of ourselves. Because we're responsible for holding the school district together through all of this and people have to see it as. Some place that they can go where they feel safe. And that's what a lighthouse. So I just thought it was a really great analogy that if we're out, you know. Trying to put out little individual flyers, we're not really leaving, it's really about leaving and having that district vision and mission and staying to the work of. What is so important that we do. Oh, I don't, um, she's out right now, so I will, I will find out. Um, Mr. President?
No, no reporting.
Covered it earlier.
One more time for everyone.
All right, it is now time for subcommittees and liaisons, so negotiations, um, anything that, anything new for you guys to open up? Okay.
Yeah, basically, these are teachers' comments. So, so.
Okay. Um, finance, probably covered it earlier today.
Yeah.
Um, LPBC, pretty much just the windows on the buses, which are supposed to be closed. So we're gonna continue checking in on that one then, huh? Um, policy, um. I guess nothing new since the last one, you guys kind of saw everything that we did last live. And uh we will attempt to. Yeah, yeah, come back to Jessica next time around. Buildings and grounds. Um, I O T, I O T net today, um, I was late to the first half of the meeting. Um, but I was present for the second half, um, in which we were looking at um some of the. How many students are using it for what purposes, um, and from my perspective, it's actually being utilized incredibly well. Um, so I was really happy to see that, um, and then I ready as well, um, continues to be utilizing the earlier portion of the. Meeting this data around I ready. Um, we'll be presenting that as something we made.
We can go change.
Um, wellness. I don't think there's anything new for wellness, fed, or technology. Um, capital committee, Mr. Trump?
So the first meeting was two weeks ago, I was not able to attend, however, I am. Thursday, don't mind.
Is that capital or master plan?
Yeah. Thursday. And then also the master plan is thirty.
Oh, gotcha.
One's right up.
Um, and then. And for our second public comment. All right, committee discussion, any old business? New business? Okay, I think it's time to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Right.
All in favor? Motion passes five zero.